All right, today is Monday, June 11th. My oldest son's birthday and it's now 6:00 PM. Meeting of the Klein ISD Board Trustees is now open. Representing the form tonight are Mr. George Ann Reitmeyer, Ms. Kathy Arlano, Mr. Rick Mann, Mr. Doug James, Mr. Steve Zimzak, and myself, Ronnie Anderson. Provided by the Texas Government Code, the Board Trustees will now go into closed session according to section 551.071, Private Consultation. The Board's attorney regarding all matters is authorized by law including Board Governance, 551.072, Discussing Purchase, Exchange, Lease or Value of Real Property, 551.074, Discussing Employment, Evaluation of Disciplined Personnel Including Board Governance, Including Superintendent Evaluation Contract, 551.076, Discussing Security Personnel and Contract and Devices, 551.082, Discussing Disciplinary Matters or Complaints Regarding Schoolchildren and/or School District Employees, 551.081, Discussing Personally Identified Information About Public School Students, and 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. Meeting of the Board Trustees will reconvene approximately 7:00 PM.
Okay ma'am, your attention please. It is 7:10 and the meeting of the Klein ISD Board Trustees is reconvened. If you've not done so already, please silence your cellphones. Thank you all for being here tonight. We're a school district of over 53,000 students who are not in school right now, thankfully, and over 6,800 employees who, a lot of them are on a very well-deserved break, and more than 25,000 active volunteers, so that's always, that's always great to see. We appreciate all the members of the community and staff who come to our meetings and attend, and our shared visions that every student enters with a promise and exit with a purpose. And all of us working together, parents, teachers, staff, and community, will help make that happen, focusing on pathways, challenge, equity leadership, and continuous improvement. So, thank you all in so many ways of partnering with us. You'll note on tonight's agenda, a school district resident, employee, vendor, or potential vendor has the opportunity to address the Board of Trustees for four specific purposes. If any one of the audience would like to address the Board of Trustees for these four listed reasons, would you please come forward and register with our Board Secretary, Ms. Arlano?
And we have, we have some who have already signed up.
I should ask first.
Yes, David, we have, we have yours, David.
Okay. All right, as we move forward tonight, Ms. Arlano will lead us in prayer, followed by Beverly, a scout?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We will have a scout, looks like Josh Cantu, who will lead us in both pledges, to the US flag and Texas flag. Ms. Arlano?
Would you please stand? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us this opportunity to share and celebrate our successes, listen to ideas, and guide us to make decisions in order to promote educational excellence for all our students. Watch over the almost 4,000 young men and women who so proudly walked across the NRG stage at last week's graduation ceremony. Provide them courage to explore what they love and confidence to lead the next generation. We ask that you watch over our community, our faculty, staff, students, and their families and safeguard them as we enjoy and they enjoy their summer season. Please also protect our soldiers who sacrifice so much for our country as they fight to keep us safe, and also give peace to their families. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Mr. Cantu? Yeah, come on forward.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Josh. Can we proceed? Okay, our school board meetings must be conducted in accordance with strict Texas laws. For example, we cannot vote on any item that is not listed on the agenda, and in fact, we may not publicly discuss items that aren't, that do not appear on the agenda. All of our voting must be done in public, but we can privately discuss items of personnel, discipline of students, acquisition of school sites, matters of school security, and specific items requiring legal advice. However, the final vote must be in complete view of the public. So, please understand, the meeting is for the Board to have a discussion and deliberate and to take action. I'd ask that you refrain from making comments, public demonstration during the meeting so we can stay focused on the matter at hand. The superintendent, along with the Board President, prepares the agenda and notice for the meeting, which is distributed to each Board Member the Monday night, a week before the meeting. Individual Board Meetings, Board Members have questions. We often call or email the superintendent to get our answers or have our discussions. So, we seem to be moving quickly. That's because we're prepared to make a decision. We deeply appreciate the trust you put in us, and we're going to continue to work our hardest for the benefit of each of these kids. We're now ready to proceed with the agenda. Watch your chanting. That's better to me.
That's right.
All right.
It's Gary Anderson.
All right, we will begin tonight with a celebration of Father's Day, coming up this Sunday, the 17th. So, would all the Fathers in the audience tonight please stand? Your attendance.
All right, and we will, we're going to actually circle back to, from the, at the end of recognitions, to recognize our scout visitors who are present tonight, but first we'd like to celebrate three members of our Board of Trustees. Mr. Anderson, do you want to take that?
Yes, it's very neat. First, Mr. Zimzak, I'd like to recognize you and present you with your 15-year service pin.
This is your pleasure, Mr. Anderson.
Congratulations, absolute honor, sir.
Thank you. If you want to run against me, sign up here in about a month. I'm not going to give it up unless somebody runs again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next service pin goes to Ms. George Ann Reitmeyer, who served the school district for 28 years, 15 as an employee, and 13 as a Board Member. Thank you.
And she was 18 when she started.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
And our last service pin goes to Ms. Kathy Arlano. Ms. Arlano has only served our school district for 30 years.
30 years.
29 of those as an employee and the past year as a Board Member.
Yes.
And unofficially voted best temporary president for the Board.
That's right. That is true.
It's easier in secretary.
Right. So, Steve, George Ann, and Kathy, could y'all, Justin's making hand motions, could y'all, could y'all come in here real quick, take a quick picture? Because this is a, a, some total of 70 years of service to Klein ISD with these three. That's right, that's right. Let's give these guys a big round of applause. Come on.
We're going to take a few minutes here and get to recognize someone, two very special people. The first one is Ms. Judy Remato. Would you please stand and join us? So, Ms. Remato is retiring after serving our district for 39 years. During her service, Judy served multiple capacities, including intermediate school and high school art teacher, department chair, assistant principal, and was named the Texas Assistant Principal of the Year in 1999. That's worth applauding. And she also served as the technology director, executive director, and lastly, as the associate superintendent of communications and planning. And Judy's a true promise-to-purpose investor, and I'm so grateful, and congratulations on your retirement.
I really will make this short. I do want to recognize my family in the audience, my husband Scott, you'll stand. My daughter Morgan Keith and her husband Justin. I think that's the first time I've said "and" her husband. My colleagues that I work with are here, so if you guys will wave or something. Love you guys. And lots of other friends and things in the audience. You know, I used to watch people retire and I would think, "Gosh, when you retire, you're really old." And the thing is, I don't feel really old, so I'm just moving on to a new chapter, and I like to say that I'm retiring from Klein. Klein has been really good to me. Try to get through. But for 39 years, I gave Klein my all. And I appreciate you guys, I appreciate everybody that I've worked with over the years. It was an awesome ride, and my greatest hope is that as Klein moves forward with promise to purpose, that they keep that family feeling that Klein has, because that's what kept me here and that's what kept so many others here. Thank you.
Judy, would you like to say something? Please.
Yes, I'd like to say something. Well, he outlined much of what Judy has done as far as the district, but many of you do not know what she has established through Go Public Gulf Coast. That is an organization, we hear so much in the news, the negative things that happen in public schools, but we don't often hear the positive things. And so, an organization was formed in our, in the Gulf Coast area, and Judy came on with her team as, as they assisted her, but she led it, for sure. All the social media in which that happened, the webpage, the Twitter, the Facebook, et cetera, and has really pushed that forward. So, I think sometime when you're in the movie and you get there early and you see Go Cluff, Go Public School Gulf Coast, it is Judy Remato's foundation in which she led us in that effort. So, thank you, Judy.
Do I have to stand up there, do I? Judy, I just want you to reflect a little bit on our time together, because as an art teacher, and I was the drill team director, we spent a lot of time together, and that is probably one of the most creative people that I have ever met. If I felt a little low and I needed some ideas, all I had to do was sit in Judy's room for about 10 minutes. We had a few ventures together as a principal and assistant principal. She traveled with me to California with 110 girls, and we had the best time, it was amazing. And it was just, it was a great honor to work alongside her, and we did a few little projects together, and also just to be part of her energy and her creativity. So, I will miss you a lot.
First time I, I met Judy was 98 or 99. You were Klein Oak. Kurt was the principal, and you were doing something in computers. I think we'd gotten a grant or something like that.
A billion dollars.
Uh huh. Our oldest daughter was, our oldest daughter was student body president, she drugged me over there for something, and I'm going, "Oh, this sounds pretty interesting." But those of you that have spent time in the corporate world, it's not unusual, a large corporation will have a certain vice president, and maybe he's over technology and then somebody retires and we move him over and now he's going to be over finance for a couple of years. No matter where that person went, you said, "Oh, well, that's the vice president in jail, he's going to do okay." Not because he was an expert in any particular area, but because he had the skill to draw out the best of the people that, that he was representing as a, as a corporate leader. And I don't know, Judy, how many titles you've had, but on the board, and I see Dr. Kane is here tonight, Jim, welcome. We can make room for another chair.
That's true. Come on, come on, Dr. Kane.
Get a taste of the old days, but Jim would come in and say, "Well, we're doing this and that, and Judy's over this." I go, "Oh, I thought she already was," but, because she was the kind of person that demonstrated extraordinary flexibility and, to George Ann's point, a willingness to just jump in. And even if you didn't know anything, we all walked away thinking, "Well, Judy's going to take care of that." So, thank you so much for your years, and unfortunately, you have to spend more time with Scott, but somehow you'll get through that. Thank you, Judy.
Judy, I've only known you for 29 years now, or 28 years, and you have accomplished everything that I could have ever dreamed that we could have assigned to you, with class, with success, with leadership, with tremendous success. And getting to know you all these years, it's just amazing to see the accomplishments and to see the success that this district has benefited because of you. I thank you, I welcome with you. Best wishes.
Judy, Judy, Judy. You've heard everybody talk about your successes with Klein, and I want to talk about her successes in the community as well. We, I've worked with Judy the last, what, four years has it been on the, with the Northwest Chamber, at the Economic Outlook Forum? Judy is tremendous. Everything that they've said about Judy is, is absolutely true. She has a heart for service, she's extremely creative, and whatever you're needing, Judy already has the answer before you need it. So, so again, Judy, I just want to thank you personally for making my, my work on the Northwest Chamber an easy thing for me to do. You, you've been tremendous, and I want to thank you.
Judy, I'd like to thank you for a lot of things. Most of what everyone said, absolutely echo, but what really stands out for me is the way when I came on as a new Board Member nine years ago, you know, we had about a year of just tough stuff that we voted on and dealt with, and you had to teach me a lot about a number of things. A lot of it, most, a lot of it was about zoning, which continues to be a little sensitive. But, but to really learn what goes in behind the scenes around something like that, better equipped me to speak to it and to fairly represent the spirit behind it for the kids, and it really helped a lot of people understand that as well. And then, Dr. Kane had an initiative, like a year or two after I started, about how we really needed to grow and explode how we communicated. And it was like overnight, all of a sudden, Twitter, Facebook, our website, all of these vehicles just started happening, and we started keeping count of how many followers we had, and that number just grew and grew and grew. And it's the same way everyone said, it was, you know, you had all, it seemed like you always had so many things you're doing, and then anything that got added, it was added with class, and there wasn't a detail that was left out. And so, in my mind, and the way I look back on the things that you touched, there was always this, this polish that is the exact same way we hear and see all of our schools perform. Everyone has got excellence kind of as their goal, as, "Yeah, I'm going to win, I'm going to do it better than you or everybody else." And everything you did just seemed to be that way and kind of followed that same DNA, and I'm, and I'm grateful that you helped me be a better Board Member and enjoyed getting to know you over the years. So, thank you, and God bless your retirement.
And just real quickly, not to belabor the point, but I want to echo everyone's words, Judy, one of the things you probably don't know is whenever I was doing research for Klein ISD, I watched old Board Meetings on video, and I remember, and that's really terrible, but it's true, that's a true story. And I remember one time, there was some event that occurred, and at the end, when Board Members were sharing comments, one Board Member said, "I'll tell you what, Judy Remato did a great job talking to the media about some terrible tragedy that had, had occurred, some, some, something that had, had occurred." And I remember writing down the name, first off, I was like, "I wonder how you spell Remato?" That was my first thing. And then, and then I moved forward to this very afternoon where Dan, Judy and I were on the phone with Chronicle Reporter, and what, it is, it, among all these other things that have been, been listed, I really wanted to talk attendance zones, but Ronnie stole it from me, but, but your, the, your ability to form relationships with the media, and then, and then really ask them good questions whenever you're in there, I mean, it's just something that, that I personally very much appreciate, and literally, from the first time I heard your name to this very day, it continues to be a shining strength, and so thank you for that, for all of your work in the community, for the attendance zoning stuff, and for the amazing team that you lead. Thank you for all that you've brought forward. Thank you, Judy.
Okay, next, we get to celebrate Ms. Beverly McGlasson. Would you please stand? Beverly is retiring after 25 years with our school district, and during her time, she worked in student services, data services, and IT, and she became the district's first webmaster in 1998. In 2003, Beverly joined the superintendent's office and has enjoyed working with many different Board, enjoyed working with many different Board Members and superintendents. Beverly, congratulations. We're very proud of you.
Well deserved. I just want to say that my job is the absolute best job in the entire district. I work with a remark, stop laughing, stop it. I work with a remarkable group of people, from this perspective and from this perspective, from teachers to office people, to administrators. Everyone has a different perspective, but this perspective is so unique and so special, and I've had the privilege to work with 18 different one of them. But this is the best one. This is the best group. All I can say is, thank you. I appreciated working with Dr. Kane, worked a little bit with Butch Tice. All of you in the audience, it's a very special place we are, whether you're a parent, a taxpayer, a student, a teacher, it's a very special place, and it will always have a special place in my heart, and I thank you.
Thank you, Beverly.
Beverly, you do life with such grace. I've heard you take interesting calls from the community as I was sitting in the reception area, and you listen so well, and you are a problem solver. Your attention to detail is amazing, you have such expertise. You've been a buffer for all these Board Members. It's like herding cats, as they often say, but you've done it so well, and we just appreciate your kindness and the grace in which you have implemented your job and your relationship with each of us. Blessings on your next step. I know that I've had an opportunity only to work with you directly for the last year and a half. I can't tell you how many times, if we were to log in, how many times I called you, you would have thought that we had had an outstanding relationship for about 15. But I always knew that you'd have the answer and you would work through it, because you always say, "Kathy, it's going to be okay. This is what you need to turn in on this given day." So, I do appreciate all that you've done.
So, my wife and I have been blessed with six kids, not seven. Some, my wife's relatives have enough for a baseball team, we had enough for a basketball team plus one, but not quite enough for a school board. But imagine siblings, those of you that have siblings, a family of seven siblings, all type A personalities, all who think they all hung the moon, they lied to each other in order to bring praise to themselves and to minimize any negative that there may be out there. And then having a mother like Beverly, who, who would tell each one, "Oh, you're my favorite child. I just, I don't know about these other six, but you just do everything right." Knowing that we would never tell the other one, because that might give them some way to get up on us. So, Beverly handled all of us, what'd you say, 18 total? Wow. When I hung up after talking to Beverly, I thought, "I like having a personal secretary." And I know Ronnie Anderson won't get this kind of treatment, much less than Rick Mann. So, but you, you did that with, with such talent as if you really were our mother. But thank you so much for 15 years. You've guided me through this maze that Ronnie talked about, and we certainly appreciate you. We'll miss you, but in two weeks, we'll ask Christine, what was that other lady's name that used to do that?
Beverly, I always felt like I got the best, and nobody else did, so thank you. Nobody else can say this, I guess, but age has something to do with this. Beverly, in 98, you became the webmaster for the district, and this board was not in place in 98, but I was, and most of us didn't know what webmaster meant. So, we learned with you, and we built with you, and you have been our rock ever since, whether it was in IT or it's been in the superintendent's office. And I just want to make sure we have a direct internet connection with Tucson, Arizona. Congratulations and thank you.
Wow, you have, I guess the word I want to use for Beverly is consistency. I mean, even when I was running for office, I haven't been sitting here this long, but when I was running for office, Beverly had the same concern and demeanor that she had even after I became elected in the office. The care and attention that she provides, that's an excellent way that you described her. You know, all her favorites. Are you the favorite? Yes, you're the favorite. But the thing, the, the thing that I want you to leave with is that you have been really the flagship of this district. You, you've been the best, your characteristics have been the best of what this district is all about, and I really want you to understand that.
Beverly, just everything that they said, of course, but just the way that you, you take everything that we do and everything about our district, what, what you've done, what you've gone through, you've left everything better than you found it. And that's a great leadership example that Chrissy has gotten to see and many others have. So, the, the touch that you've helped us do, you've blessed us so we can bless many more people in the things that we do, and, you know, the 700 to 1,200 pages a month that we have to read and be ready for, with all the questions and answers, you really set us up for success, and it all continues to go back to making it better for the kids. So, thank you for leaving it better than you found it.
I mean, y'all know nothing would happen without Beverly. I mean, y'all know that, right? Here's, here, let me give you a perfect example. So, this meeting's coming up about, about a month or so ago, and, and, I mean, it's not, I don't, nothing's on my radar about this meeting. I mean, I know it's Beverly's last meeting, and Beverly comes into my office, as she is wont to do, and says, "So, you know, it's, it's retirement." I said, "Yeah, Judy's retirement, your retirement." I forget about the proclamation thing. And so, Beverly says, "I wrote my proclamation." I said, "That's great, that's excellent, that's excellent, Beverly, excellent." And, and also, and I said, "Uh, uh," and she said, "Are you asking about the cake?" I said, "Yes, yes." She said, "I've ordered the cake, too." I said, "That is so good, that is so good, thank you, Beverly." And so, thank you, Beverly, for always. Beverly is remarkable at attending to details. Beverly is remarkable at attending to details, at remembering historical things, at having an amazing political, politically savvy view of the world. And all of that is true. We often call her our flight director because she's always doing this, she's always leading us this way. But what people don't realize is how much you lead here. And in fact, every one of those motions was with a heartbeat, every single time. And I just thank you for what you have brought to this district, but I will tell you very personally, what you have brought to me has been remarkable. So, thank you, thank you. Thank you for writing your proclamation. I'm sure you like the wording. I know you do. Okay, and next up, we have Bank of America, Texas Public Sector Rebate Check, and Audrey Ambridge, our Executive Director of Financial Services, is going to be joined by Nathan Hudson for the presentation of this rebate check. Audrey?
All right. Good evening, Vice President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Champion, Ms. Spalding and guests. The collaboration and partnership between our finance team and Bank of America results in a rebate, a rebate check paid to the district annually. The district earns this rebate by paying our vendors electronically through Bank of America's e-payable system and also utilizing their purchasing card and travel card program. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing two of our Promise to Purpose investors that inspire and coach our purchasing and accounting teams. Stephanie Wells, our accounting manager, and Lisa Turner, our purchasing director. Along with our finance team is Nathan Hudson from Bank of America, who will now present the rebate check.
On behalf of Bank of America, I would like to thank the district for their partnership and say thank you for the work that you all do in the community. And congratulations to the retirees and the trustees for their service. I feel like I should come work here so I can have some nice things said about me. But bankers don't always have nice things said about them, so, but, but we do appreciate the partnership and we, we look forward to continuing that into the future. So, thank you.
Next up, we have our Tasby Stand Up for Texas Public Schools Award. Judy?
Dr. Champion, Vice President Anderson, board members, Ms. Spalding and guests. Each month, we recognize a business or organization with a Stand Up for Texas Public Schools Award. And tonight, it is our privilege to recognize Prestige Life Touch Photography for their work in Klein ISD. And representing them tonight is sales representative, Chance Bowling, and territory manager Sid Bowling. Y'all stand up here so everybody can see you. Great, perfect. Prestige Life Touch Photography has been a devoted business partner to Klein and the Klein Education Foundation for 14 years. This family-owned business graciously sponsors a table at the academic banquet and donates all of the photographs of the honorees for their keepsake program. They also donate their services to photograph all of the honorees at the district's annual staff recognition banquet, and each honored staff member receives a complimentary event photo, which is awesome. The Bowling family also donates a photo of the Klein Collins High School valedictorian, who happens to be with us tonight, for their school's honor wall. This is a snapshot of the generosity of Prestige Life Touch Photography team. We thank the Bowling family for their commitment to the staff and students of Klein ISD and for standing up for public education. So, help, join me in thanking them for choosing, they didn't have to do this, for choosing to make a significant and impactful difference to Klein ISD. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Judy, we have another stand up, we have another stand up for Texas Public Schools Award?
No.
Yeah, we have a second one?
Uh, we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that I know of.
We have this Stand Up for Texas Public Schools Award awarded to Judy Ramato.
Oh, my gosh, did I forget my name?
Gotcha. No, last, last movie we were going to have too.
I was like, oh dear.
Thank you, Judy, for always standing up for Texas Public Schools. We appreciate you. But she does have an alumni award.
I do.
All right.
I love me some public schools, y'all. Okay, so each month, we are blessed to honor an alumni. And our board members started this and so each month, one of them honors, sends us a name or a couple sometimes. And so, tonight, we're going to honor Richard and Kathy Noel. And is it Noel or Noel?
Noel, except for December 25th.
Noel, except at Christmas time, we say Noel. And they were nominated by Board Member Steve Simzak. So, if y'all will join me. Now, before I get into my formal presentation, I also want to let you know that they are joined by their daughter Claire, and she's the valedictorian of Klein Collins High School. So, Claire feels scanned to be recognized. And then also joining them tonight are some personal friends, Dr. Donald Collins Jr. and his wife Janet, and their children, Donald III and Campbell. If y'all will stand, please. Okay, now usually I get these things and they're long and I have to cut them down. But tonight, I was so impressed by this story that y'all just bear with me, you'll see why at the end, I'm going to read you the whole story. I did cut it down for the slide though, because it's just amazing. All right, so here we go. Richard's Klein story began in August of 1969, when his family moved to Northampton and he was a second grader at the original Klein Elementary School on Spring Cypress. Kathy's Klein story began in January of 1974, when her family moved to Greenwood Forest and she was a sixth grader at the original Klein Intermediate School on Student Airline. The 1970s were the original boom years for Klein, so between Richard and his two older brothers and Kathy and her two younger brothers, the Noel and Broussard families had children in the opening classes of Northampton, Hildebrandt, Wonderlick, Strach and Klein Forest. Including Richard and Kathy's daughter Claire, who I've already introduced you to, the Noel and Broussard families have attended 10 different Klein schools. That's amazing. All right, now Richard and Kathy existed in parallel Klein universes for many years. Finally, they were both students at the same school back in the days when Klein High School was the only district high school and they were in their senior class. They were both summa cum laude graduates of the 1,020 student class in 1980. Richard was involved in band and German and Kathy in your book in Spanish. They had many common friends, but they still did not really know each other. All right, so many years before Promise to Purpose became a formalized vision for Klein, Richard and Kathy took their high school diplomas out into the world to pursue their purposes. Richard to the University of Texas at Austin and the University of Texas Medical Branch in Galveston, and Kathy to Rice University in Georgetown, University in Washington DC. Both returned to the community where they had been raised to start their careers, Richard in medicine and Kathy in higher ed. At this time, they finally actually met each other as members of the young adult group at St. Ignatius Loyola Catholic Church. And as they say, the rest is history. So, early on, Richard and Kathy decided that they wanted to live in the Klein area so that their children would be able to take advantage of all the wonderful educational opportunities Klein had given them. At the same time, they also wanted to give back to the community themselves. As a physician, many of Richard's patients are Klein students. Kathy has primarily been doctor mom to Claire and active in her school activities, especially as volunteer coordinator for the Klein Collins High School Orchestra Booster Club. Richard and Kathy's plan to establish their family life in Klein has definitely worked out. Ranking higher than either of her parents, which was her goal, Claire recently graduated as valedictorian of the Klein Collins High School in, of 2018, and she will be finding her purpose as a member of Rice University's class of 2022. And it was a great honor, not only for her parents, but for all of us in attendance, for Dr. Donald Collins Sr. to sit on the stage during the Klein Collins graduation and present Claire with her diploma, bringing the family full circle. Congratulations. I'm going to go ahead and give this to you guys, and then if you would like to say a few words, you're welcome to come to the mic and so we can get it recorded.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very honored. 1969, I was a little second grader here at this very spot in the building that was probably 100 years old at the time. I never would have imagined that I would have found my wife, had a daughter, be valedictorian and be back here 39 years later. I'm very honored by your, by your bestowal. We're very honored that Don Collins and his wife and children are here and Dr. Kane and his wife are here, people that we've met over the years, and thank you for the honor.
I'd like to just echo what Richard said, you're very, very proud Klein alums. You know, it's something that I took with me to Washington DC and something I brought back. You know, what's, strong branches, deep roots. So, Mr. Simzak, thank you very much for honoring us. Dr. Kane, Collins family, it's wonderful to see you all. And this is really the land of promise and we're sticking around for a while longer. Thank you all very much.
I appreciate your.
Thanks to me, but Dr. Kane, appreciate your planting the seed in my thick head here that this would be a great couple to recognize, and you're absolutely right. Now, that building you went to here, James Wonderlick and Butch Tice, they built it. So, it was about 100 years, right, Butch? Now, I'll leave you with this. Well, let me, let me say two things. How many people in this room were in a high school class of more than nine people? All right, now keep your hand up if you graduated in the top 10. Oh, so we have a couple of smart guys in here. So, number four in the class, number nine in the class?
Number 11.
Oh, 11.
1980, I was almost the 10.
Almost the 10. And then, to your point earlier, Richard, number one in your class. So, a lot of single digits. Now, Rick Mann, there were only eight people in his class, so he says he was number eight.
Nine.
Nine, oh, okay. But let me finish with saying this, and the presence of the three of you stimulated this. Some of you may recall, and some of the younger ones may recall having read this, in about 1961, President Kennedy had invited all of the Nobel laureates for that particular year to the White House for dinner. So, a lot of brainiacs in there, real smart people. And Kennedy, who was a pretty witty guy, told that group, he said, not since Thomas Jefferson ate dinner alone in the White House have we had this much brain power. And we feel similarly tonight to have you in our presence. And a good sign of what makes Klein such a great district. So, thank you so much.
Steve, go ahead and picture with them.
I'm going to bring the IQ down. Now, come on up here.
Thank you all so much. Next up, we have the Tomball Regional Health Foundation Grant, Mr. Terrell King, our Associate Super H R, who want to do this presentation. TK?
Yes, Vice President Anderson, Dr. Champion, board members, Ms. Spalding and guests, very excited tonight to bring great news, especially starting off the 10th, 10-year anniversary of our Kleinwell Healthy Living Program, of a very important grant received by our Kleinwell program and our program coordinator, Ms. Tammy Cummings. So, it gives me great pleasure to announce that the Kleinwell Healthy Living Program received a grant from the Tomball Regional Health Foundation in the amount of $69,727.79 to help further our district's vision of making sure every student enters with a promise and exits with a purpose. So, let's give that a big round of applause. And especially to Tammy for her work in spearheading and submitting that grant application in support of our students. So, these funds will be used for, to grow our healthcare-related and career and technical education pathway program, our advanced nursing emergency medical technician program and our pharmacology pathway programs. So, as far as giving supplies and training models that will replicate the training being used at Lone Star College and Side Creek Emergency Medical, giving students true-to-life training benefits in our community by producing highly experienced and qualified students ready for their futures in the healthcare industry. And doesn't stop there. A portion of the funds are going to go to our district's healthcare providers to meet the everyday needs of students on and off campus. Our Klein ISD Health Services Department will also receive scanning devices to support in the required hearing screenings of students who have certain barriers in which traditional audiometers and screenings cannot be used. And also, we will receive training tourniquets and CPR training devices to allow for practice and retention of skills in case of medical emergencies. And the Steam Express is also going to be a beneficiary of this grant to receive funds to add materials such as infrared forehead thermometers and broken bone X-rays to highlight medical professions and create interest for all of the passengers onboard. And so, once again, let's give a big round of applause for this grant. And we have representatives in attendance tonight from the Tomball Hospital Authority, Lynn LeBeuf and Marilyn Kenyon. And, and board members from the Tomball Regional Health Foundation, Tom Kikis, Jack Smith, Bill Hoagie and Latrelle Shannon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So good.
Then we have one other?
Yes, and so to join, next is Rosa Brown from the Texas Association of School Boards to join me for this presentation. Our Klein ISD Department of Safety and Risk Management headed by our Director of Risk Safety and Risk Management, Mr. Bruce Berry, is recipient, a fifth, five-time recipient of the Tasby Risk Management Award. Ms. Brown is here to present.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Brown. I'm with the Texas Association of School Boards Risk Management Fund. And I'm here tonight to present Bruce Berry and the Risk Management Department with our Excellence Award for 2018. Klein ISD was one of 10 districts across the state that submitted and won the award at our recent conference. You guys won for your how to prepare for a fire marshal's inspection. Yes. The insurance person is probably the other person, like the banker who wants to work here so y'all can say nice things about me. But I'd like to present this to Klein ISD. As you said, this is the 10th year in a row that you guys have won the award. And we've also have a loss prevention grant. also have a loss prevention grant that Bruce has applied for and won just about every year that he's applied, maybe 14 times maybe, 14? So he comes up with good ideas. They sound horrible, I guess, you guys, but they're needed. And these are ideas that we share with other members in our risk pool because they're good ideas, they're timely, and they're needed. So without any further ado, I'd like to present this to Bruce for 2018.
Thank you.
To the medal.
And as we go to the center, this does, this award also comes with a $1,000 honorarium that will be used for the district for the planning of safety and risk management programs.
Yeah, I didn't want to say that when somebody gave $69,000.
Then drive.
Klein ISD. Want to thank you for 27 years of service, Bruce. Great job.
And then finally, the Klein Forest Family of Schools is working collaboratively to ensure every student enters with a promise and exits with a purpose. Dr. Jenny McGowan, our Deputy Superintendent, joins us now with a strategic priority report that will provide an update on the common Klein Forest goals and strategies that will direct next steps for the next school year, as well as a celebration.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Champion. Good evening, Vice President Anderson, members of the board, Ms. Balding, and guests. Tonight, we have the joy of celebrating the many ways that our shared vision has come to life in the Klein Forest Family of Schools, as well as provide the board an update on the specific ways we will advance our strategic priorities in the Klein Forest Family for the 1819 school year in order to ensure equitable outcomes for every student who is KF-bound or currently a KF Golden Eagle. Few of our Klein Forest Family of Schools principals will lead our report this evening, but before turning over the presentation to these outstanding principals, I am overjoyed for us to formally recognize Klein Forest High School as a 2018 School of Character. This prestigious honor was only awarded to one high school in the state of Texas this year and only five high schools across the nation. Schools of Character hold their designation for three years and serve as models of excellence within their state where they share character education best practices as part of a network of schools of character. Please join me in congratulating the entire team of educators, students, and community members at Klein Forest High School who earned this recognition. And Klein Forest Principal Lance Alexander is here this evening and has a few introductions and celebrations to share. Let's welcome Lance.
Judy, I'm glad you got emotional up here because, guys, get ready, it may get teary up here. I'm just giving you a forewarning. First and foremost, can I have the staff from Klein Forest that's here, will you please These guys are awesome, and no more is it just Klein Forest. You're gonna see tonight that we're called Klein Forest Family. The reality of Promise to Purpose for us means that our kids have a chance at life. Many of our kids come from gang-infested neighborhoods, they don't have parents at home, they raise one another, and for us, school is the most positive thing they have, and that's what we're here to offer. Every day they come in, that's what we take in. We don't go to work, we go to school. It's a calling to do what we do, and those kids are our kids, and it's our job to make sure that they have a chance at life. We live by five core values. That's what the State School of Character is about. They are be the legacy, practice mindfulness, radiate school spirit, embrace diversity, live the golden rule. These are now being embraced by all of our feeder schools called the KF Family. And now it gets to the tough parts. I get two stories to tell you. And preface the two stories, I'm about to talk about two girls that are on free and reduced lunch, they're at risk, and they displayed a true servant's heart this year. One of them came to my office and said, "Mr. Alexander, I want to do something for the developmental prom. I like to bake cupcakes, and I want to sell cupcakes to give it back to the developmental kids." And I said, "Go ahead, but you can't do that at school, you gotta do it in the neighborhood." So she did. She got some of her friends together, and they went out, baked cupcakes. Three days later, she came in my office, and she had a whole satchel full of money. It was over $400 she raised for our developmental kids so they could have a prom. Right then and there, I just started. The last story happened this past two weeks ago, right before graduation. It goes back to right around homecoming. A girl came in my office, she was crying. She said, "Mr. Alexander, I really wanted to go to the homecoming dance. I'd saved up $20, and I lost it, or somebody stole it, I can't find it. I need a ticket, is there anything you can do?" And I said, "Sure," so we gave her $20. The very last day of school, she came up, and she had a Ziploc bag, again, full of coins, dollar bills, everything else. She wanted to pay that 20 bucks back, but we told her to pay it forward, so that's where our hearts set as a family. And I would just like to thank the board for everything you do. You guys mean a lot. Mr. Simsack, we got your recognition this week. Thank you to all of you. Thank you. We love you, and you are appreciated. Thank you again.
Well, that can't get you excited about what's happening in Klein ISD and the Klein Forest Family of Schools. I don't know what can, so thank you, Lance, and thank you to the team at Klein Forest. We're also celebrating some folks this evening that I want to make sure get honored and recognized because we have many of our Klein Forest Family of School principals here and the Klein Forest Collaborative Team. So if you're one of those folks, our principals, our collaborative team, will you please stand up and be recognized because we're grateful for your leadership as well? Those are some outstanding people who do great work every single day, but at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Jeff Bailey and Principals Ally Martin and Charles Woods.
Good evening, Vice President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Champion, Ms. Balding, and guests. Klein Intermediate Principal Charles Woods and Clank Elementary Principal Ally Martin join me this evening to share celebrations of the work taking place in the Klein Forest Family of Schools, as well as the common goals and strategies to continuously prove in 2018, 2019. To begin, Klein Forest has been improvements in student achievement data, including gains in all four indices of the state accountability system for increased participation and performance in advanced coursework, including a 65% increase in student participation in the advanced courses at KF, and a 26% increase in students receiving a three or higher in advanced placement tests.
I'm Charles Woods, Principal at Klein Intermediate. I'm not gonna make you cry. This is a little bit of celebration. We have a lot of things to celebrate within our family, our Klein Forest Family of Schools. One of the things that we want to celebrate, we really take pride on, is our parent university. This year, our parent university went up to 235 parents graduating in May of, on the 17th of May. That number increased from, increased 155 participants in that cohort from last year. So there were 235 parents that graduated through our parent university this year, increasing by 155. That is something to celebrate. At Klein Intermediate, we dominated in robotics. I was up there several times this year on the weekend, watching our kids enjoy robotics, putting robotics, robots together, operating robotics, watching their sponsor all the time with so much energy. She always comes to my office and asks me questions about this and that. Heart's in the right place. She, we dominated in robotics. Those kids were amazing with robotics, they enjoy it to the fullest, and they did a great job inviting schools from other districts into our, on our campus to also participate in robotics, high schools and intermediate schools. Finishing, second overall in academic petaathlon was amazing at the regional meet. Our kids were so excited. I was excited, my first petaathlon ever as an intermediate principal coming from high school. It was exciting for me as well. The SOAR Initiative, you see one of my students with a SOAR belt. It's a championship belt. Whenever our kids do some things, it soars, SOAR is our core values, then they get a chance to take a picture with our SOAR championship belt. They get excited about that as well. Destination Imagination, first time we qualified for state, and we got first place, first time ever in state. Wonderlick Intermediate, this is the first time we met as a Klein Forest Family of Schools. The former principal, Chris Regirio, this is the first thing he showed me. It was the, I want to pronounce that right, arpicon?
Aquaponic.
Aquaponic. Aquaponic garden. He was excited about it. He showed it to me. I had no idea what it was. I had to research it, but it's amazing where you're growing vegetation without soil, using fish and waste from fish. That's pretty awesome. It's, it's pretty awesome. He was excited about that. Also, at Wonderlick, Wonderlick also second year in a row that they were selected for the Jason Learning, for the Argonaut Program, second year in a row. That was, that's awesome by Wonderlick. And also, we would like to thank all the strong partnerships that we have in the Klein Forest Family of Schools. We have so many partners that help build the community and help with our students and really stand out is our teaching and learning, our TLC, their mentorship that they do at Klein Forest High School, that is very much appreciated. Those are things to celebrate.
Hi, I'm Ally Martin. I serve as the principal at Clank Elementary, and I also want to celebrate the work that is being done in the new KF-bound initiative among the elementary feeder schools in the family. We are working together to not only recruit and retain the absolute best educators for our kiddos, but also cast that vision for them about what it means to exit with purpose as they go to Klein Forest. Oh, and this is a video, sorry, this is a little video that we played at Job Fair this year.
Come join the Klein Forest Golden Eagles family.
I love this school because I know my teachers have a good purpose on education, and I have a lot of friends here.
I love my school because we have amazing teachers, we have fun books, and we have amazing activities that we can do.
This is my first year teaching, second grade bilingual at Clank Elementary. As a first-year teacher, you literally have no idea what's going to happen in the classroom, but along with the support that I've had here at Clank, we've been able to make it, and we've been able to serve each and every one of our students and just, you know, grow with them and really get to know them.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Stowe. I have been a Promise to Purpose investor at Greenwood Forest Elementary for 25 years. In the KF feeder schools, we have got amazing students from all different cultures, so we're very richly diverse. But I think the number one reason why I love working in these schools is because we love building relationships with our kids. I always loved that saying that said, "Teaching is a work of the heart." That's what you will see here.
Hi, my name is Shandra Singleton. I'm a mother of four children here. I love Klein ISD. I love being a part of it. We were one of the families that were affected by Harvey, and when we came here, the administrative staff was super supportive, and it made us, you know, getting back on our feet so much more easier. I'm just very thankful to be here.
Some amazing celebrations, for sure. We know that collective efficacy of a team of educators has the highest impact on student performance. And so for the last several months, we have been working together as the Klein Forest Collaborative Team to examine data, including student performance results and the findings from our curriculum management audit to collectively diagnose the root cause, articulate clear problem statements, set measurable goals, and determine measures of success for the Klein Forest Family. Although each campus will determine action steps personalized to their students, the KF family was working as a whole unit to improve student outcomes as we reimagine learning, cultivate talent, and build community.
As we reimagine learning in Klein, we have the opportunity to approach teaching and learning utilizing the latest research regarding best practice. In order for us to continuously improve, it's important to identify areas where we need to grow. We've learned that our students are moving from elementary school to secondary school without being on or above grade level in reading. Reading scores on state assessment indicate a 20% or greater achievement gap in comparison to students who attend non-KF family schools. Additionally, reading map performance indicators that more than half of our students are not yet making one year's growth. Addressing these problems requires us to take a closer look at the causes. Teachers may not have complete understanding of how to provide strong initial literacy instruction or tier-one instruction with enough rigor to meet the learner's needs. A systematic approach for literacy instruction has not been implemented with fidelity. With that being said, we have tremendous opportunity to reimagine learning in the KF Family of Schools. Our goal for the 1718 school year is to increase student achievement and narrow the achievement gap by at least 5% in reading. We'll use a variety of indicators to demonstrate students' progress in local, district, state, and national assessments. We'll support teachers through the PLC process and focus on strong tier-one instructional practices by identifying essential reading standards and success criteria to ensure that students are successful.
So for cultivating talent, to ensure the presence of high-quality educators in the KF family is a key component to student success. The challenge that we face in the KF Family of Schools is that educators haven't had the chance to implement professional learning experiences or systems that focus on high-yield instructional practices. We must also receive training to learn more about culturally responsive practices to prevent low teacher expectation for student success. When we look at the causes of the challenges that the KF Family of Schools is facing, we see that we've not had a systematic approach for ongoing professional learning and collaboration. A common focus across all of our campuses to provide and implement personalized professional learning that concentrates on high-yield instructional strategies has been missing. Additionally, we have not consistently held high academic expectations for our students, which has resulted in reduced academic rigor. Identifying these challenges and root causes once again allows us to focus on solutions. The KF family has already begun and will continue to identify, receive training, and implement high-yield culturally responsive instructional strategies that are utilized in all of our schools. We'll use these strategies to raise our educators' expectations for student success so that the student outcomes improve in local, state, and national measures. To ensure that teachers and leadership teams are successful, we'll use linking walks to collectively evaluate and monitor the use of high-quality teaching strategies that include culturally responsive practices. As a measurement of a success, we will analyze the percentage of teachers meeting quality teaching T-test goals that include evidence of implementation that positively impacts
Building community, relationship peace. Building community in the Klein Forest Family of Schools helps bring all, us all together for the benefit of our students. As a group, we've had varying core values and expectations related to character education and school culture. Our schools have worked in silos rather than as a cohesive team to focus on elements of character development, school culture, and core values that are common to all our campuses. We will address this issue by aligning all current campuses' core values to those of Klein Forest. By doing so, we will ensure that we share common language and clear expectations about character education, school culture, with every student in the Klein Forest Family of Schools. To start this process, every campus is committed to following the to following the Klein Forest footsteps by preparing to become a national school of character. And the 2018, 2019 school year will serve as a preparation time for campuses to complete self-assessments using the Ten Principles of Character Education outlined by Character.org and implement any programs that are needed. To ensure that the Klein Forest Family of Schools is reaching these common goals, all campus improvement plans will show aligned core values to those of Klein Forest as well as supporting character education programs. Each campus will also strive to reduce the percentage of disciplinary referrals leading to placement in ISS, OSS, DAEP, and JJAEP. We look forward to building community of values-driven leaders in Klein Forest Family of Schools. Very relationship-driven.
This past week, our P2P leadership team, at the leadership retreat, we had over 600 members of the district's leadership team gathered to grow together as leaders and plan for the 2018-19 school year. The Klein Forest family gathered in the arena at KNPC and started drafting our action steps for each campus to achieve these collective KF family goals. We are so honored and it is such a joy to serve the amazing, amazing, amazing kids and educators in the Klein Forest Family of School. At this time, if you have any questions about our work, we'd be happy to answer them.
Congratulations.
Make it happen.
Okay, before we go to intermission, we are going to honor our scouts who are here tonight. Other than Josh Cantu, if there are other scouts, Josh, would you stand up as well? Would you all please stand so we can get your name, your troop number, your school, and your badge? And you can follow along on one of the screens, allegedly.
I'm Josh Cantu. I am homeschooled. I'm working on citizenship in the community. My troop number is 1324.
It's on the overhead if you'd like to follow along.
I am Rain. I'm in troop 1324. I go to club and I'm working on communications.
My name is Ethan. I'm in troop 332. I attend club and I'm doing communications.
My name is Matchash. I am also troop 332. I am working toward communications and I am homeschooled.
My name is Kyle. My troop number is 332. I go to club and and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
My name is Michael. I'm also in troop 332. I go to, I attend club and I'm doing citizenship in the community.
My name is Michael Weldon. I'm also in troop 332. I also attend club and I'm working citizenship in the community.
My name is Cooper. I'm from troop 1323. I go to Klein Oak and I'm working on citizenship.
My name's Erin. I'm from troop 1550. I go to Klein High and I'm working on citizenship.
Yes, each one of you, before you leave, scouts, please see Ms. Arlano for your certificate. We're now going to take a brief intermission. This gives the board a chance to get to meet all those who are honored or recognized tonight. We'll line up right in front to meet you all. All right, we are now going to continue our meeting with citizens inquiry. Ms. Arlano, I believe we do have a few.
Yes, we do.
Three or four, so let me read this before we get started. Approximately 20 minutes of each regular meeting is allocated to citizens inquiries. After registering with the board secretary, a school district resident employee, vendor, or potential vendor shall have an opportunity to address the board trustees for four specific purposes as dictated by the state laws governing open meetings. First, to discuss an item that appears on the agenda, or two, make a request for specific factual information, or three, to ask for a recitation of existing policy, and four, to redress grievances. In accordance with the law, no deliberation, discussion, or decision will be made other than to consider proposal to place on the subject, on the agenda for a subsequent meeting, unless the subject is listed on the board agenda, in which case it may be discussed by the board. Factual information only in regard to a citizen's inquiry may be shared at any point by the superintendent. A written response will be provided. Oral comments are limited to five minutes in length, unless extended by a majority of the trustees. It may not mention any individuals by name or position or contain any personally identifiable information. And now, we'll have our citizens speak.
Our first one?
I think our first one we have is, looks like Melanie, Melody?
Melody.
Barb.
Melody Barbin.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Champion and members of the school board. My name is Melody Barbin. I live at 18203 Willow Court and my daughter goes to Tyce Elementary. I want to start by commending you on what I saw as an increased security on my daughter's campus soon after the Marjory Stoneman Douglas shootings. Automatic locks were installed on the entrance doors and parents were asked to show IDs to enter one at a time. The process isn't perfect yet, but I see it as a big step in securing the campus. I also noticed a great increase in police presence by the Klein Police Department at both Tyce and Dory. And I very much appreciate our highly skilled and capable police force. I also appreciated your 90 seconds with Brett, the episode right after the Parkland shootings. Every question that I had had was answered in your 90-second address, so I very much appreciate that and thank you. The main reason I came to speak to you today is about the proposed expansion of the Marshall Plan as per Governor Abbott's School and Firearms Safety Action Plan. This plan allows for teachers to be armed or other staff to carry guns inside schools. For the safety of everyone on campus, I urge Klein ISD to not adopt this program. The New York Police Department is the nation's largest police force and are among the best trained. Yet its own study showed, over an eight-year period, the average hit rate was 18% for officers in a gunfight. Law enforcement officers who respond to an incident at a school could mistake for an assailant, a teacher, or anyone that is armed that is not in a uniform. Firearms skills degrade quickly, which is why most law enforcement agencies require officers to practice on a shooting range frequently, as much as once per month, under simulated high-stress situations. Anyone without such frequent ongoing practice will likely have difficulty using a firearm effectively. And law enforcement officers overcome the physiological response to stress that can reduce the fine motor skills required to accurately fire a weapon. I believe there are real mental and emotional reasons against arming teachers. Instead of paying for the immense training that would be needed, I would much rather see the state and school district invest money into a more robust mental health system. Research shows that at least 42% of mass shootings, the attacker exhibited dangerous warning signs before the shooting. I support funding programs that would allow teachers to identify these warning signs and would train them to intervene. I'd prefer a system that would take counselors from test administration and would allow them to counsel students on a regular basis. I'd prefer to spend resources bolstering programs that we may already have in place that have been decimated by reduced state funding. I would like to see programs put in place on campuses that teach students mindfulness practices, meditation practices, or other techniques that assist them in managing their emotions and stress. Programs like the Reboot Program and others are in place in Texas and many public school campuses where they are seeing a great reduction in campus fights, bullying, and disruptive behavioral outbursts. I would like to see every campus and PTO have gun safety trainings like the Be Smart for Kids Program. And it would be especially great if the Klein Police Force supported these programs and did them in conjunction. Ultimately, keeping guns out of the hands of those that should not have them is the best way to stop mass shootings. And one way to do this is to support red flag laws or extreme risk protective orders. This would allow family members or law enforcement to petition a court to have a person's access to firearms temporarily restricted if they show a danger to themselves or others. Just to recall the statistic I stated earlier that in at least 42% of mass shootings, mass shooters display the warning signs before the shooting. We can no longer dismiss these alarms. So I would like information on whether Klein ISD will be putting funds towards programs like this and whether Klein ISD is considering the Marshall Program. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, it looks like Melanie and Jack.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Coe. I live at 3619 Beach Hill. I'm a proud graduate of Klein High School, class of 1993, and a parent of children who attended both Howdy and Struck Intermediate. I have also worked locally in higher education for the past 17 years. I come here today with grave concern over Governor Abbott's School and Firearms Safety Action Plan. As a parent and educator, I request information on how Klein ISD plans to respond to the School and Firearms Safety Action Plan. I am not alone in my belief that arming teachers is a bad idea. Nationwide, parents and educators agree with my stance. In 2017, Pew Research Center survey found that the majority of U.S. adults oppose allowing teachers and officials to carry guns in schools. A survey by the Texas American Federation of Teachers found 65% of teachers believe local law enforcement officers and school security officers, not educators or administrators, should be responsible for any armed response to an attack at a school. The risk of school shootings is a current source of fear and concern for our students. Personally, I worry greatly about the psychological impact on students if Klein ISD allows teachers to act as school marshals. Students knowing that their teachers and administrators could potentially be armed will hinder the learning environment. A 2010 report from the NSCDC at Harvard University researched the connection between student anxiety and learning. Simply put, they found when students are afraid, it impairs learning. We do not want an environment where students are fearful of teachers because their teachers may be armed. This is especially true for our most vulnerable students who suffer from anxiety, are living in high-risk environments, or who have already been traumatized due to past exposure to violence. Students deserve to learn in classrooms that are gun-free. I encourage Klein ISD to survey students regarding their feelings about employees who are not police officers carrying concealed weapons. My son came here today to share a student perspective.
Hello, I am Jack Coe. I'm 14 and I will be going into Klein Collins next year. And I feel as though it is in the best interests of not only the school board, but all of the faculty, the teachers, and the parents that teachers should not be the ones carrying firearms. I feel like all the time and effort that would go into training them and arming them would be much better if it were to go into something more productive, I suppose, like better staffing or equipping the people whose job it is to protect us, our Klein Police Force, and not put that pressure or responsibility on teachers. Also, when I was at Struck, we only had three counselors and I, their job was to handle the entire school. I feel as though if someone is mentally or emotionally unstable enough to willingly shoot up a school, I feel like they won't be able to get the right amount of attention and help than they would be able to be with such a tight counseling staff. That is all. Thank you for your time.
We have David Anderson.
Go ahead, use this so that I can stay on task. Since the angina, they won't let me have riddle. Superintendent Dr. Champion, Vice President Anderson, Klein trustees, Dr. Collins, if you're still here, and fellow stakeholders. As much as I love Dr. Collins, I think it's pretty cool to have a superhero name for the school district superintendent. My name is David Anderson. I live at 4719 Lost Lake Lane and I have been a tax-paying resident of Klein ISD for 38 years. Hold your applause. To give you an idea how long ago that was, I remember when Steve Simzak had long blonde hair coming out under a ball cap. Tell them it's true. So I am the proud father of two Klein College graduates, both successfully employed and independent. I have been a choir booster off, I started a choir booster club, was an officer, worked on six different musical drama productions, Klein Collins marching band booster. I was the voice of the Klein Collins marching band. That's why you remember this. And it was a real hoot. I was a chaperone on countless trips for Roth. Is Mindy Spurlock still here? Was she here? Yeah, yeah, okay. And given the chance, I would do it all again. Maybe my kids, not so much, but, but I would. And I want to thank you for sustaining this quality educational machine. I would thank the administrations that came before you as well. Quality education is the crowning achievement of a great community and it demands a sustained investment. They're already playing the music. Quality, quality education is the crowning achievement of a great community and it demands a sustained investment. Last week, I proudly voted for the tax ratification as I have voted yes every time Klein ISD has asked for the community's support, bonds or otherwise. That is not the case with everyone. There are people that campaign against any increase in tax. Those people are still stakeholders in the district, but they are not our friends. And you know very well who the leaders of these minions are. And I, my point is this, I, I am the kind of taxpayer that is an ally of the district and your mission to purpose. There are others out there right now advocating for no new taxes. I own six firearms. Governor Abbott released his School and Firearms Safety Action Plan for Texas school districts, which advocates the expansion of the School Marshall Plan, which allows teachers or other staff to carry guns inside school. For the safety of our students and educators, I urge Klein ISD to resist the political pressure and refuse to implement a School Marshall Plan. The presence of guns at school adds an unpredictable element that puts educators and students at increased risk and layers of even more safety concerns on top of the heavy responsibilities that are already placed on teachers. There is no evidence that arming teachers will make schools safer. We have a Klein ISD police detail. The community trusts them. Arming civilians is not an effective way- Arming civilians is not an effective way to stop active shooters. Klein ISD place is the place, police is the place to invest in the extensive training necessary for the active shooter situation. Civilians are not. Even the civilians that fantasize that they would be the hero. Out of a hundred and sixty active shooter incidents, the FBI found only one successful armed civilian intervention. He happened to be a U.S. Marine. Um, so let's please not bet our children's lives on a Marshall Plan. Research indicates that the presence of a gun at school makes children less safe. Students may know where the teachers keep the guns and how to get the access, or to even overpower a teacher if they chose. Teachers and other employees carry guns, if teachers and other employees carry more guns in the schools, we can expect tragic accidents. I'm going to skip because it feels like I'm running long.
I'd like to, um, ask the board to allow Mr. Anderson to go through. How many more minutes you think you have?
Uh, a minute and sixty seconds, uh, two minutes max. Thank you, sir. If teachers and other employees carry more guns in the schools, we can expect tragic accidents. In March, in Northern Calif, a Northern California teacher and reserve police officer accidentally fired a gun in a classroom, injuring one student. Uh, other recent reports include student employees accidentally leaving guns unattended in the bathroom where they were found by students or parents. Experts in education and law enforcement agree that more guns in schools can increase volatility and risk. The American Federation of Teachers, the National Education Association, and the major cities chiefs association have all expressed opposition to arming teachers. Your liability insurers will also have an opinion. Listen to them. So I'm here to ask, what is the Klein Trustees Board's policy on arming educators and administrators after only a two scant, two weeks or less of training?
Do we have another?
We have one more.
Good evening, Ms. Courtney. Are you speaking on the matter that's on the agenda tonight?
Yes, I am.
I think that the board would like to, uh, have you present to them in their executive board room, so if you'll just give us a minute for, to close the meeting. No, you can stand right there. Uh, we will now go into closed section under section five-five-one-zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code, Consultation with Board Attorney, and five-five-one-zero-seven-four, Deliberation Regarding Employment Duties Evaluation of School Personnel. The time is nine o'clock and no action will be taken in closed session.
Meeting of Klein ISD Board of Trustees has been reconvened. Are there any further, Kathy, are there any further citizens?
There are none.
Okay. And we'll continue with our reports. Item number seven. The report scheduled for night's agenda, the EOC Accelerated Instruction Report for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen EOC testing year, has been removed and will be on the July agenda. Okay? Now, now proceed to our action items. First item for consideration, an approval of proposed modifications of local board policy CW naming facilities. May I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote passes, six-zero. Next, we have the approval of proposed revisions to the student handbook for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, six-zero. Next item for consideration for approval of the hearing officer recommendation regarding employee level-three DGBA complaint.
Mr. President, I move that the board adopt the heavy, the hearing officer's recommendation in the matter of level-three DGBA complaint of Ms. Teresa Courtney.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, six-zero. Next is consideration on approval of a second amendment to the election order of calling a tax ratification election. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, six-zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items you would like to have removed? I'll start with you, Mr. Simzak.
None.
Mr. James.
None.
Mr. Mann.
None.
Ms. Arlana.
Right.
Ms. Wrightmeyer. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Motion passes, six-zero. We're now ready to approve the minutes of a regular meeting from May fourteenth and the minutes of the special meetings on May twenty-first. May I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Motion passes, six-zero. Now, calendar review. I know the following events coming up. Our next meeting will be scheduled for Monday, July ninth, and we'll have a workshop at the end of the month on July eighteenth. Now, we're ready for closing comments. I'll start with you, Ms. Wrightmeyer.
Congratulations, Judy. You've done a wonderful job. Best wishes on your next steps in your journey ahead. Same to you, Bev. So glad you two were honored tonight.
Same here. I'm going to miss both of y'all. It's been a lot of fun.
Mr. Mann.
I'm not going to miss you because we're going to FaceTime y'all for each meeting. Just so you can be part of us. God bless both of you for what, all you've done for us. I want to thank the administration for, I thought, an excellent graduation. The change of having the board walk in was really cool and being a veteran, to have us walk through the flags for that last presentation was really cool, so thank you. Wish everybody a wonderful summer.
Mr. James.
Boy, I tell you, um, congratulations to, uh, the retirees. Boy, I'm, I'm going to get there one day. One day, I'm going to get there. Also, the service recognition to George Ann and to Kathy and, and to, uh, Mr. Steve. Greatly deserved. As well, the graduation was the highlight for me. Just amazing to see the, see the looks on those kids' faces. Shaking hands with the future is what I call it. So, uh, again, I thank, thank you for the great privilege.
Mr. Simzak.
End of school year, good graduation. Did we have a total count of that? Was it close to four thousand?
Almost four thousand.
And... Possible in two years that we could have the, um, uh, Dr. Kane and Dr. Collins at graduation. It'd be quite an honor. Very moving. Good job. And Beverly and Judy, retirement is more than they tell you it is. Wonderful. Learn to take naps.
Of course, Beverly and Judy, just have a great time. And I'm sure in about a, you know, couple of months, we won't be anywhere on your radar and that's okay. Steve, thanks for your nomination tonight for the alumni recognition. It was unique and I think they're all unique, but they're all special in their own way and appreciate it. And then, um, for Klein Forest, just the whole character, uh, award recipient, um, that speaks loudly. That's just, you know, grades come and go, but to be known with character is, doesn't get any better than that. And so that's just, I think that's something very proud, as he did, to, to pound your chest, not pridefully, but just as out of appreciation. I think, I think that's just great for them. And then for graduation, Dr. Champion, I appreciate you actually shaking every hand of every girl.
Isn't that phenomenal?
I just think that, I've heard from parents and kids and that was just, that was, that was a bigger deal than you think for some of them, so.
It was, it was an honor.
Appreciate that. That's all I have.
So, I have a couple of thoughts. I also want to thank Judy and Beverly and congratulations and, um, I very much appreciate you. But I, I want to speak to, um, the fact that this, um, this time in Klein ISD is, um, sometimes a bit difficult right now. And, I mean, let's just be honest, that's just where we are. We have a big election coming and that's just a fact. And so, um, I, I think that, that we just need to acknowledge that, that right now there, there are just a lot of things going on, um, around the, the district and sometimes it's real easy to lose perspective about why we do what we do. And I will say that having the Klein Forest family present tonight was a great reminder of why we do what we do. You know? I mean, it's why we continue to do the work day-to-day regardless of what's, what's said or what, or whatever, why we do the work. And so I want to thank the Klein Forest family, some of whom are still here. Thank y'all. I want to thank our teaching and learning team, led by Jenny McGowan, who, um, said, "Here we go," to your point, and what can we do to support and mentor kids? And I want to thank those teachers who, every day, at Klein Forest family of schools and across this district who have, who gave so much this school year. And at the end of the day, we remember that there are fifty, almost fif, next year, almost fifty-four thousand souls coming into Klein ISD schools. And what we're going to have is, we're going to have an outstanding school year for those guys. Because we firmly believe, united, we firmly believe that we can and will achieve our shared vision of every student entering with a promise and exiting with a purpose. And so, thank you, Klein Forest family, for being that reminder for us all, um, tonight. And, um, with that, I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Uh, unless anyone has a picture of Steve with his blond hair under a baseball cap? It is nine-thirty-six and our meeting is now adjourned.